Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Committee on Higher Education with Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs as well as Committee on Waterland. Today is February 8th. It is 3:00 PM and we're in room Conference Room 229. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abrupt and end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, February 13th, 3:00 PM in Conference Room 229, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature website. We are allowing two minutes for testimony per testifier in the interest that we can move the agenda along. With that, our first item on the agenda, we have Senate Bill 3375. This is relating to wildfire prevention. Appropriates funds for the University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources to establish a central Oahu wildfire prevention plan in consultation with Department of Land and Natural Resources, community stakeholders, and nonprofit organizations that specialize in wildfire preparedness and mitigation programming. It requires matching funds from the United States Department of Agriculture, Forestry, and Wildlife Offense Grants. With that, we have testifying on this matter, Candace Park, the Deputy AG.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The department has submitted our comments regarding Article 10, Section 6 of the state constitution, and I am available for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Candace. Dylan Armstrong, individual in support. And we don't have anyone else that has signed up to testify in person or on Zoom. So do we have anyone here in the audience that would like to testify on this measure? If you do, please come on forward. Hi.
Aloha, good afternoon, Chair Kim, Chair Inouye.
Yes, it's Wakai, but Vice Chair is...
I'm here on behalf of interim dean Anna Wychorek with University of Hawaii Sitar. I apologize if you did not receive our written testimony. We want to stand in support of the intent. We also have Dr. Clay Trower-Nitt to answer any questions. Sitar has had a longstanding involvement and partnership with wildlife response and mitigation at Hawaii, and we're available to answer questions. I just want to make one comment. After we submitted our testimony, we noticed that in the description of the bill, it references that we're to... Sitar is to establish the Central Oahu Wildfire Prevention Plan, and the language in the bill referenced the plan as a Central Oahu Protection Plan. So I just want to make that note.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And so our testimony opens with following the description using Central Oahu Wildlife Prevention Plan, but the content of our testimony refers to what the bill says. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Kalf, you have questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
If we could call upon Sitar and to ask Dr. Trower-Nitt to explain a little bit of the background on this particular measure. It was kind of designed to address a number of concerns that urban Honolulu legislators and community stakeholders had raised earlier last year. And we learned that the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization had applied for a grant through the USDA Forestry and Wildlife Division in pursuing a federal grant. And so as a result, you know, we looked to see whether we might be able to put together something that could augment that if the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization was successful in obtaining the grant. And so Dr. Trower-Nitt can speak to some of the kinds of projects that HWNO and Sitar have worked on in the past, particularly with respect to helping communities become, you know, part of the framing and development of solutions in this area.
Sure. Thanks, Chair. Chairs, for inviting me and members of the committee. Just a really brief background. Central Oahu is one of the last PUKAs in the state that lacks one of these plans. And the other thing about the community wildfire protection plans are that it's a little bit of a misnomer, and this is sort of the Forest Service policy about how this works. It's not exactly a plan that specifies where specific actions need to take place. It's more of a gathering of information about the types of projects that communities would find useful, the priorities that communities have. So it's really more of an information gathering program or a process. And then once you're with... You have a plan in place that allows you to apply for specific federal grants to actually implement the projects. And so I think this funding is really what we're looking at is to provide resources. This kind of bill would provide resources to move from that sort of planning phase into actual fuels management, fire risk reduction, and more geographically specific to urban Oahu, which again does not fall under any of these existing plans.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I think the key here was that in many of the other wildfire mitigation measures, most of the focus was on the actual departments and agencies working to either address or mitigate specific wildfire risks. And this seemed to be one area that actually gave communities an opportunity to work with both UH and other experts in preparing their own plans and projects that could address their needs.
Yeah, and I apologize to the Senator to ask this specific question. Examples of that include... And sort of why we are looking to kind of extend beyond the jurisdiction of DLNR, for example, is that many of the highest-risk areas lie outside of state lands. And so, for example, Sitar has worked with Hawaii Wildfire and DLNR on fuels management projects at farms and other landowners of Waianae, for example, to actually implement these kinds of risk-reduction activities. And so one of the challenges is they're sort of piecemeal, one farm here, another farm there. And what we're really looking to do is expand protection around the communities.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. So the testimony was orally given, said that Sitar has been working on these wildfire plans?
Yeah, we have been providing expertise on vegetation types and best practices. So like the actual methods of how you reduce risk.
Okay, but nothing that is stated here in this measure for Central Oahu?
Well, yeah, because nothing exists yet for Central Oahu as far as an existing plan or other projects, for that matter.
Okay. Members, any other questions?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for testifying today as well as testifying to the Waterland Committee jointly with others as well.
No problem.
Regarding wildfire, there's many bills out there.
Yes.
However, there's one measure that asks for an appropriation with regards to the wildfire group, and that's looking at statewide, including not only state lands, but all areas working in conjunction with private developers, private landowners as well. And so, you know, just to let you know that there is... There are other measures before the money committees as well, looking for resources, you know, for a certain plan. So with that said, I guess later, as we close down on closing the budget, just to let you know that hopefully a master resource budget will address wildfire programs as well and make sure that it covers as many areas just in case you fail to get one specifically for University Sitar.
Right, I understand, I appreciate that.
Just to let you know and the committees know. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Donahue, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So would the Lahaina fires be considered a wildfire?
Oh, yes. Yeah. That would be sort of like where you have a wildfire. It starts as a brush fire wildfire and then moves into... Becomes an urban conflagration. So that's sort of like the worst possible outcome, right? You could imagine.
So did they have a wildfire plan?
They had a community wildfire protection plan, but again, the part of the plan, I guess you could say that's missing, is moving folks to actual implementation, right? So the wildfire community protection plan exists for West Maui, but it's very, I could say, broad stroke. It's non-binding, right? So it's not necessarily like a plan to say these things are going to happen here or there. It's more to say, here are some options, here are some concerns, and really to get community input. And again, I think that it's more a function of the language that the US Forest Service has chosen to use to describe what those plans are that may present some misconceptions.
Thank you. I represent parts of Central Oahu. So I'm just curious, are there other plans on Oahu besides Central Oahu?
Yes, there is currently one for West Oahu. So that's pretty much, I think, Kapulei up through Makaha as well as East Honolulu. And again, this has been this long-term effort, really spearheaded by Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization, but other organizations, DLNR included, have sort of been doing this piecemeal across the state. And so Oahu... Central Oahu is kind of the... One of the last areas to have one of these in place.
Can I ask why, or is it less? Since they have a lot of forestry around it?
Right, I don't have a great answer for this. I think it started on the Big Island because that's where Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization was based and sort of has grown from there. And it's just, again, it's been piecemeal. And then the first priorities tended to be the leeward sides of the islands, and then we're kind of moving there. Been expanding from there.
So how long is it going to take to create the plan? And what's the cost to do so?
The plan is typically several months just to get input from all the communities. It's really, again, it's a process to allow the public to share their concerns, potential solutions. And the cost, I couldn't say off the top of my head as far as... But I think what they typically go for in the past has been one of the programs from the Forest Service that has funded this kind of work. It's got a cap of $300,000, and then it requires matching funds. And so I think on the order of $150,000, $200,000, somewhere in there. But I would have to look.
So do you do community meetings or you do it through the neighborhood board meetings?
Yes, all of the above. Whatever ways they announce, through the neighborhood boards, to community meetings, trying to gain interest in it. And obviously, the interest has kind of catapulted since August. So in the past, I wouldn't say the attendance has been all that great, but it's been a different game.
But may I request that you notify the Senators? So we can also notify...
Of course. Of course.
So how long was the West Maui wildfire protection plan in existence?
I believe it was 2014.
So 2014, you had the plan, but nothing was developed after that to set it?
No, nothing. There were place-based projects that spun off of that. So there's a West Maui Fire Task Force had done some fire break projects around Olawalu, for example, that kind of came out of the partnerships of that plan. There were... Maui New Marine Resource Council was doing projects to protect fire above Maalaya. But it really falls on sort of these independent or small-scale projects to raise money and implement. There's been no state funds directly appropriated or available. And that's really been the huge limitation because almost every federal fund that is available, not only are we competing against other states in the Western US, we lack matching funds often, or it's hard to raise matching funds, which they require.
Doesn't this give the community false sense, though? Because it says, oh, yeah, we're going to get a, you know, Central Oahu wildfire protection plan. But actually, like you said, it's really not a plan. It's just to get... Go out and get the community feedback and so forth, and then it's what you do with it after that.
Exactly. I won't disagree with you there. I think the challenge has been, once you start that, initiate that process, is the follow-through. And I think we've been, for too long, dependent on these little small-scale, you know, projects to sort of fill in the gaps. And we have a lot of missing pieces on the landscape.
So you're talking about $300,000 plus as a cap and matching funds, but that's only for this so-called plan, and it doesn't really prevent anything from happening?
Well, again, it would... This allows the communities to then go for additional funds. So the federal funds require these, the Forest Service ones at least, they require these to be in place.
But didn't help Lahaina at all? So even though they had it since 2014, is the point I'm trying to make.
Right. I understand, I understand your concern.
Senator Fukunaga?
Perhaps if we could ask Dr. Trower-Nitt to describe the process by which different jurisdictions can apply. You have to have a community wildfire protection plan in place in order to apply for federal grants that can be up to $10 million or more. And these are sequential, multi-year types of grant processes. So it would be, in a way, to include this central part of Oahu with other parts of Oahu that could then become eligible for further grants?
Yeah, one of the challenges has been to gain the... Well, you're sort of stuck with the federal process. And the federal process is a project in order to be eligible for funding has to be mentioned in the community wildfire protection plan. And then I think the other challenge is that these... Especially these older plans, they were done at this time when, you know, some folks recognized the risk, but it wasn't widely recognized. There wasn't a lot of resources available to actually act on the ideas and projects presented. But that's not to say that very specific projects can emerge as far as identifying options from this process. It's just that, you're right, they weren't like follow-through on because there was very little resources to implement.
So has anyone ever applied here from Hawaii? Applied for federal funding beyond just this?
Yes, yes. So Waianae is a great example of that.
They applied for it?
They have gotten... Yeah, they've gotten state and private forest refunds, waterland and interfaith funds.
A full plan, not just this particular?
Not a full plan. Again, these were just for fuels reduction projects, specific projects, right? So it's like you have this sort of idea of the kinds of projects that people want to do or would like to see. And then it sort of, again, it shifts the onus on to the public to sort of say, okay, is it going to be a community group? Is it going to be the DLNR Division of Forestry? Whoever's going to kind of come forward and actually take on managing a project?
Okay, just want the public to understand that because they look at this and think, oh, okay, we're going to have this plan.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I agree. It's a problematic title because it sort of sets false expectations, as you said.
Thank you. Members, Senator Donahue?
Thank you. So do you have a timeline as to when you're going to create this plan?
This was proposed to happen basically this... It would be this year within, I think, by the second quarter of this year was what was proposed already by Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. The funding that they applied for to do this, we should be hearing about this month is when I think they were releasing it.
And a follow-up question would be, since this deals with Central Oahu, many of the communities in Central Oahu are planned communities, and they have organizations in place.
Right.
So how many organizations have been contacted to see if they're willing to put on community meetings?
Yeah, I do... As far as I know, they have not rolled that out because they have not been awarded the grant to do it yet. So they have not... No one's put resources into like planning this to move forward yet. So... In other words, right? Like they don't have money to support the staff to actually start the process.
Correct, but wouldn't it help if the community was behind them and the community was aware that they wanted to do it?
Yes, you're right, they would.
Again, maybe going out and being on the community meetings agenda? Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you.
Yeah.
We are going to go right into decision-making. But, you know, I could not find where... In the description, it said something other than the Central Oahu plan? Yeah. Would you like to point that out to us? It says prevention.
And then the bill says protection.
Oh, okay.
And the bill says protection.
Protection, okay. Yeah, the protection is there, the prevention. Protection, okay. But at this point, if it's just in the description, you can make that correction. We don't have to... Yeah, it's not on the bill. So, but thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Members, the... And I know everyone has other committees, so I'm going to go right into decision-making. The recommendation is to put in the AG amendment regarding statewide concern. And the appropriation is already blanked out. If it's not, we'll blank it out. And other than that, any discussion, members? Any other recommendations? Hearing none? Hearing none. Vice Chair, if you take the roll for Ired?
Sorry.
Recommendation is to pass with an SD-1. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Measure adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
For PSM, same recommendation, to pass this measure with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, aye vote, yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 3375 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Wa is excused. Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
For the Committee on Water and Land, same recommendation to pass with amendments on SB 3375. Any discussions? Water and Land Committee, hearing none. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 3375 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator McKelvey is excused. Senator Favella?
Aye.
Madam Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We will adjourn the triple joint committee. Called to order the Joint Committee on Higher Education and Public Safety. It is our 301 agenda, February 8th, in room 229. First item is Senate Bill 2284 relating to another wildfire. This time, Forecast System for Hawaii establishes a two-year program, the University of Hawaii, to develop a wildfire forecast system for the state using artificial intelligence. Appropriates money declares that the appropriation exceeds the state general funding expenditure ceiling. We have air to testify Brendan Moroka, who I know is not here, but his replacement? Okay, did you want to come forward? Or Stephen, you're Stephen, right? Okay, Stephen. Okay, please proceed. You're going to proceed with your testimony?
I'm sorry. We stand by our written testimony.
Okay, in support.
In support, thank you.
Okay. We may call you back on. So Candace Park?
Good afternoon, same concerns. Thank you.
Statewide matter, thank you. Abby Simmons for the Democratic Party in support. Pamela Tompamp, pimp, testifying for Maui Chamber of Commerce with comments. Anyone here wishing to testify on this measure? Hearing none. Members, questions? I have a question for Steve. Do you need a legislation in order to put together a wildfire forecast system using AI?
It's a significant effort for which there is, in theory, federal funding opportunities, but that's proven to be very, very slow. So to get a timely tool available for people in the state of Hawaii to rely on, this is the best pathway.
Okay. Okay, members, any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go right into decision-making if there's no discussion. Recommendation, members, that we amend to include the AG's testimony, a matter of statewide concern, and to blank out any of the appropriations if it is fact in there. So... And I don't think there's any technical amendments. But if there is, I'm going to cover it. So any discussion? Hearing none. Vice Chair for the votes for Senate Bill 2284, passed with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Measure's adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
For PSM, members, same recommendation to pass this measure out with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, aye vote, yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2284 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Wa is excused. Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you. That ends our joint hearing. Once again, good afternoon to the Committee on Higher Education and the Committee on Labor and Technology. We are on our 305 agenda, February 8th, in room 229. First item on the agenda is Senate Bill 3190. This relates to the University of Hawaii reporting requirements, repeals the reporting requirement to identify the cost impacts to the state in providing workers' compensation coverage for University of Hawaii students. And first up to testify on this measure is Jan Gauville.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committees. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have the Attorney General. No, no Attorney General. Okay, there is no... There is no language that we need in this one. Okay, thank you. So Ms. Gauville, can you come forward? So basically, you're saying that this report is no longer needed because you have almost nailed report claims that have been made?
Uh, in addition to that, um, I've asked around to try to figure out who actually needs this information, who finds it useful outside of even the University of Hawaii. Have not been able to track down, um, any agency that relies on this or uses this, uh, for, of any value, so. Based on all of that, um, that is why we are requesting that it.
Yeah, you folks already turned in a bunch of reports, and I don't know that anybody actually, except me, reads it.
Yes, exactly, yeah, you would probably be the only one.
So, yeah, I think we need to cut down on that, and one of the ways we're doing it is I introduce the measure to say, if you're gonna ask for reports, then we gotta have some, how we have to have a hearing or briefing on it, so utilize that. Okay, members, questions of the University of Hawaii regarding workers' compensation reports? Just, um, vice chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, one of the comments was that this allows the UH to spend their resources on creating the buy-in and report to be spent elsewhere. What resources are we talking about?
Well, it's just the administrative, um, staff support that tracks, like, just, it's one of the many data points that they keep track of, so that when it comes time to submit the annual report, we kind of have the data at our fingertips. So it's more of a government efficiency, operational efficiency, uh, statement than anything else.
No, it's not something that I appreciate, that comment, to be honest.
I agree, uh, we, we moved that.
But that is your comment, or someone's comment for the university. How many student workers get injured at UH? Ooh, on an annual basis?
Uh, I don't have the exact, uh, I can get you that information, but I, uh, am not aware of any. We could, do go through some of the workers' compensation, uh, reports, and no students come to mind as we do the quarterly reports, so. I can get you that information.
Can you send that to me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Hearing no other questions, uh, I will hand the gavel over to News Chair.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Okay, up next, we have Senate Bill 2507 relating to civil service. This excludes from civil service requirements, so employees performing services at UH, uh, student or employee housing, and certain personal services in privately financed leased or owned buildings. Okay, uh, first, we have a UH, Calvert Young.
Good afternoon, Mr. Manager, members. Calvert Young for the University of Hawaii. University supports this, uh, measure. Uh, you've already described the, uh, the proposed purpose. I would just additionally state that the university has a couple of projects that actually would fit the components and criteria of this bill. Both of them, well, one is already in active practice as student housing. Uh, the other is planned to open in another year and a half, also for student housing, but graduate student housing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the United Public Workers.
Chair, as vice chair, ComCom, Kamala, United Public Workers. You have our written testimony in strong opposition, so we stand in that and will be available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have HEA.
Hello, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. New East Bass with HEA, standing on our written testimony in opposition, Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe that's all the written testimony we received. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Chair, you have questions?
Um, yeah, first, UH. So you said, Calvert, you said that you have two, two projects. One is Rise, I assume?
Right.
The other is which one? NOAA?
NOAA.
And you expect NOAA to be operating in a year and a half?
It's scheduled to open in August of 2025.
Sure about that?
It's scheduled to open in August of 2025.
Okay, and what, what seems to be the issue that, um, prompted the need for this measure?
I think it's to make clear that on projects where the property is not operated by a governmental entity, it's operated by a private entity, and it's, and/or it's not on government land, or it's on government land that is not operated by a government entity. Those are not conditions for the government to be mandated to provide certain services in there. So with the example, let's say Rise, that's actually not on land that's owned by the, by the university or the state of Hawaii for that matter. It's not operated by a governmental entity or the University of Hawaii. So in this bill would make clear that we're not providing services, we're not required to provide services for maintaining, uh, let's say Rise. NOAA, as an example, is on UH property, um, but it's being, its property has been leased to a non-governmental entity that is constructing a facility that they will operate. So again, UH, we are not operating or managing that property or operation, so we shouldn't be required to provide services for private, non-governmental, and it, or having our governmental employees be managed and supervised by non-governmental employees.
So what stops the university from privatizing, uh, all of the housing on the campus at some point then? You had no, no civil service?
So in my opinion, there's, there's precedent in that both Atherton and NOAA, as an example only, um, they previously were not student housing. There was no student housing operated by the university or the government. In existing student housing on campus, there, there is a precedent in his history of government workers. UH was actually having UH employees operate and manage. There's precedent that we wouldn't take those away. That once it is established by, that it's government services, it's still government services. We're not, we're, we, I think there is precedent, legal precedent, as to why government wouldn't eliminate that which was historically established, but in NOAA and Atherton, again, as by example, those are, there's no historical precedent for student housing.
Okay, but this bill does not state that, right? You couldn't, you couldn't privatize or change?
I don't think it's explicitly stated in that fashion.
Right, so in the case of Rise, originally, you folks weren't gonna run it, right? The foundation, you, UH wanted to buy it, but didn't want to come to us. You went to the foundation, the foundation bought it, it was gonna lease it back to you folks, and then the numbers didn't really pan out for affordable, affordable, um, student housing, and you guys came up with this idea of, um, putting a, um, economic, sorry, my mind is slipping.
Innovation, entrepreneurship center.
Right, and then it became, um, premium dorms when you went P3 on this, so. And, and it was the intent, and you, and we have statements to the point that you folks felt that that property should be part of the university property. In the case of NOAA, uh, while it is, it is on your land, um, again, that whole P3 issue has been going back and forth, right, pending, um, until recently. You guys had to put money in it, because you thought you weren't gonna put money in it, right? In that case, um, yeah. Okay, any other questions, members? Senator Fukunaga?
In the, um, the language of the bill, it's not entirely clear that in this instance, what is being referred to is employees of a privately operated, uh, facility. Is that kind of what your position is? Because the way the language in the bill reads, it, it could be, um, viewed as a little bit confusing, where just as employees performing services in University of Hawaii, student or employee housing, what you're really referring to is employee or, I mean, student or employee housing that is not operated by the University of Hawaii.
Well, I think, uh, Part 37, though, is positions performing personal services for all users and tenants of privately financed leased or owned buildings.
Okay, sorry. That's pretty clear.
Which would not be the case for on-campus housing.
Right, so this would not be an instance that would be subject to Kono, um, prohibition against contracting out services that were previously performed?
That's, so that's the precedent that I'm referring to.
Right, okay, thank you.
So there is no tie, the private entity will do the hiring and the managing and everything, and you, UH would have no hands on any of that?
In, that's, that is what I would contemplate as the applicability for this bill, and the examples being Atherton and Rise, that's already the case. And it, and I would add that it's not that dissimilar from, say, state agencies that lease office space from private office buildings. They don't provide civil service employees to clean private office spaces, private buildings, so.
But we do have civil service people who actually still run the departments even though they're in private space.
I'm, I'm gonna say, if that's, if that's the case, it's not, it's not exclusive.
Yeah, but I'm saying like the, like in the case of you folks rent out Gold Barn Building, and people in there are University of Hawaii employees.
Working there.
Working there, right?
But the common area maintenance and the janitorial is not University of Hawaii employees.
Right, but this isn't just for janitorial, this is for?
Janitorial is a type of personal services that's referenced in the bill, yeah. So, and again, that's, that's just the example that I'm pointing out.
Okay.
Question?
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 Senator? Oh, I'm sorry.
On, please proceed.
So I know you mentioned about not wanting to be forced to provide services to private entities. I couldn't find in here where you're required to provide any services to private entities. Where, where would it, in other words, I'm trying to understand, if this bill doesn't pass, what would, what would require you to, where in the language and the law would require you to, either one, provide services, which I don't think you're required to, and if they're a state employee, why should these state employees be exempt? Why are they special? Yeah, there's probably a reason.
Sorry, what?
I just, I'm missing something, so I just, maybe educate me a little bit.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand the second, the second question. The, the first question is, there is also precedent that's not clear, that's not clear in the statute relative to the unions or the employer as to this precedent that I'm speak of, which is historical past practice. So, I will say, so UPW has raised an issue at Atherton and Rise that they feel that they should be public workers providing janitorial services in Atherton, and then eventually in NOAA, okay? But as I pointed out, UH, there's no public workers running Atherton. There's not any plans to have public workers running NOAA. Okay. So why should, again, so this would be my opinion, why should we, the university, have to provide janitorial services for private entities that are operating private facilities?
Who is the, who's the decision maker on that?
No, no, it, this is, this is an issue.
Would that be a court, is that a court? Is this to avoid a court lawsuit?
I think, yeah, well, I would think that a court would be the ultimate decision, but a bill like this would also lend more clarity to this question.
It would prevent a lawsuit? Unless?
I think anybody can still sue and, and raise the question, but.
But if I understand it right, the intent is that it lowers the likelihood of being sued because it's clarified?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, I, I mean, I.
I'm trying to understand what the motive is for this.
That's what I would hope, that people would be able to read the statute and get more clarity than currently exists, and maybe that would rethink whether this is a question that should be put to the courts. Yes. Your second question, though, relating to state employees as an exemption, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand that question.
Well, the first question might answer the second question.
Okay.
Where, um, which, which, what venue is the best venue to decide the issue?
Okay.
Legislature or the courts? Or both?
Either, yes, or both.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. So who would do the landscaping in and around, maybe not in, but around the NOAA building, being that it is on state property?
So there's a, there is a, uh, specific perimeter that has been identified for the lease to the private developer operator. It's all their responsibility. So, uh, landscaping would be another personal service that's included in this.
Right, but wouldn't you want some consistency with the landscaping since it's right smack in the middle of UH property? I mean.
Um, it, well, it's, it's, it's on the perimeter of the UH Manoa campus, but.
Right, but I mean, it's.
With all due respect to Ms. Gauver, who has, is in charge of landscaping, I, I hope it's not consistent and at a higher level, but, it is their responsibility.
She's not doing a good job right now with.
No, I'm not, I'm absolutely not saying that, or anything about the employees that actually are currently doing it, but we have a higher level of expectation for, um, the private lessee, because.
And should they not perform as anticipated or expected, then what?
Yeah, so the, the, all of these lease agreements, the, these things for what the condition should look like, and the expectation of the lessor to the lessee, of what needs to be there and how they need to take care of it, that is all expelled out in these agreements, including remedy, uh, you know, on the part of the lessor to enforce on the lessee for, you know. I mean, there's a, you know, there's obviously hundreds of things, right? Landscaping, condition, there will be UH personnel, students that are tenants there, so we may have an interest in, you know, making sure that they, you know, get what they are paying for, you know, which is, is expected to be more than their current on-campus housing rates.
Any other questions, members?
I, I do have a question. So, do you, I, I'm not sure why this is in here, because if you have a contract and it's a private property, what makes it, what makes it necessary for you to say, okay, but of these private contracts that we have, it's leasing our property, you have to use these employees? I mean, I don't know, what is your lease when you're saying this is privately owned or privately managed?
Well, in the, in the case of, in the case of NOAA, not, not Atherton, because we don't own that land, but in the case of NOAA, UH is absolutely 110% have already, the, the developer lessee, we are not providing any services. They, they are operating their facility. They are expected to, as a condition of the lease, maintain the property to a certain condition that we would minimally expect, but that's all on them. We're not, the university is not responsible or liable for providing any services to them.
So why is the, the employee thing an issue then, if in fact they have the lease? They're totally responsible, you can go after them if they don't do the job. Then why are you trying to insert employees into that contract? I can see if they have, if they're managing something on your property for which you have responsibility.
Exactly, I'm not, we are absolutely not asking to insert government employees into a private facility.
But you are in here, because you're trying to exempt it, so that must be they are doing it, because you're trying to exempt.
No, no, we're, we, we're supporting this measure because we want to be clear. We are not, and we don't want to be mandated to put government employees into a private facility. That's, that's why we are supporting this measure.
Well, it, it just seems that you're begging the question by putting it in here instead of saying, it's a lease, they own their own property, we have nothing to do with it, which is what you're saying, and then you're saying, but we want to exempt the employees. That sounds to me like you think you have some responsibility.
Absolutely, 110%, I do not think that the government or the university has any responsibility to provide.
By inserting it, it looks like you might think you do, as you're inserting this, saying, we want them to be exempted. Anyway.
I'm making clear then, I, there's, the government does not have any expectation that we are putting in government employees into a private facility.
Well, I'm just asking you, because this says you want to exempt us, so that means they're there to be exempted. Anyway.
I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Have the unions filed any, anything in writing anywhere?
I, I do have a complaint from UPW.
And where, and the complaint was lodged, submitted to where?
Um, so I, 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 I'm not aware, because it wasn't like me, but.
Right, but.
I don't know if it's the court or Hawaii Labor Relations Board, if it was just a complaint issued from the union to the employer.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the facts.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
That underlie this issue.
I don't know where that is.
And, you know, that would be nice to have in order to understand what prompted this. And without that information, it's almost vague.
So let me ask you this, so Rise has been in the making, and you knew it was gonna be private for how long? Six years now?
Twenty seventeen, eighteen, around there.
Okay, and only now this measure is, you feel a need for this measure? Is it because of the lawsuit or the complaint?
Yeah, I would say so, which only, I've only been made aware of it late, late last calendar year.
Because you've been, you've been of the opinion that you don't manage it, it's not on your, it's not on UH land, so you don't need this.
Yes.
But because there's been a complaint, you want the legislature to insert ourselves into this whole thing?
Making more clear, yeah.
Okay, um, any other questions?
I do, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, vice chair.
Thank you. So does the university post jobs, et cetera, on campus for students specifically to look at some of these, um, positions? Housings and?
For, for these types of services? I'm not, I don't know.
For these type of, uh, full-time, you know, permanent type of positions, um, most students, because they're going to school, don't either qualify, or they're not able to quit at the time. But we do have jobs, other jobs, we have a student employment website where there's many jobs posted, and we also, uh, post all of our, um, non-student, uh, employment opportunities, um, on websites as well.
Well, I guess my concern is, even though you guys say you're not responsible, if you're hosting jobs or, you know, telling students, you know, this is, uh, places that you should look at to work, that they're considering that you guys have a reputation or know, uh, the.
the housing that you're showing them, right? And so then, therefore, would, would you guys be liable for pointing them in a direction that they not have been? Something that they shouldn't?
Oh, I see, I see.
But, but, but the university hosts jobs around town for a number of employers that are interested, and I'm not sure that there's any higher level of responsibility on the part of the university for, for doing that. If the private operator desires employees and would want to post through UH, maybe that might be an avenue for them as well. But UH is not assuming any responsibility to ensure that the private operator is fully staffed up for any of the services they provide there.
Sorry.
Sarah Iha.
You know, I'm, I'm, when I ask a question about the word "all," it says positions performing, these are exempt from civil service, positions performing personal services for all users and tenants who privately finance leased or owned buildings. What if the word was "some"? What would be the practical effect of that? Because what, so, because I don't know if you're, you would have to, I'm not even sure if it's proper for a civil service employee or a state employee to provide services to a private entity. So I don't think you can do that anyway, unless you're contracted, but I didn't really know if you even do that. And so.
That would be, Senator, that, that would be my, that's my belief, understanding on it, but not, you know, it still has not preserved a complaint from UPW, arguing the opposite. So that's why, that's why I'm saying this bill would help make more clear because that, maybe that's just yours and my position on, you know, it's a private facility, it's a private operator, why should government employees have to do work for a private?
Right, so let's say that's settled. I, I'd let the court settle that anytime. But the concern would be, let's say you have several buildings and you, you have half, half public, half public agencies or your offices and so forth, university. All of those, you can pick who you want, you don't have to do civil service. In other words, you have a building and you have one, you know, so it, it gets around, and I don't, I don't quite understand, if it's civil service, if it's a state employee, why not be civil service?
Because when, okay, so moving off.
You raise another issue of we don't want to be forced to provide private, but I'm saying that, no, to me, that's a separate issue. The issue that I'm concerned about is, you know, the, the political assessment that this will reduce the chances of we're losing a lawsuit, that to me is a political assessment, right? You have to make decisions about how to use your discretion about your power. But as to the substantive issue of, of the principles of civil service, I'm trying to understand how the political consideration trumps the civil service principle. You understand what I'm saying? And it may just be justified if there was a court, adverse court ruling. This is probably asking too, too, too deep and too much for a small bill like this, so I, I do acknowledge that, so I assume, I was assuming this is a serious bill, but.
Members, any other questions? UPW?
One real quick before you come up. So going back to the personal services for all users, could personal services be counseling? Could personal services be, I don't know, dorm floor leaders?
Conceivably, they could be.
So then you wouldn't be providing any counseling for any kind of student UH information or whatever to these tenants of these buildings?
So those types of services, we, we do provide to the student, but we don't provide them in the facility itself. So the example there I would use is with Atherton Rise.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that, it's a positions, positions performing personal service for all users and tenants who privately finance owned buildings.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, you have, you have PACE in there, you have, you have all kinds of UH services in that building, right?
Well, PACE, we, we actually have a lease, so they're a separate, we are leasing for PACE space in there. So whatever services, we are the ones providing it for PACE. But for the residents at Rise, so PACE is in Rise, it's a portion of Rise, but for the students that are living in Rise, we don't, that's, that's a different part of the building, different floors. We're not providing any services, so we also don't provide counselors, resident advisors specifically for the students that are living in Rise. Like, unlike on-campus housing where every floor, there's like a resident advisor or there's.
So you don't have any of that. So any complaints regarding any housing or dorming, that's not?
That's the, that's the operator's responsibility.
Okay, I'm still on this thing. If they are private and you don't manage it, they own their own property, what, can you tell any private entity how to hire people? So why would you need to insert yourselves to tell them you cannot hire public employees?
Again, I think, I think, I, I think you're asking the same question that Senator Iha asked me, which I'm, I'm telling you. If it was my opinion, we all agree. Okay, we don't, we don't tell private operators how to operate their private facilities.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, UPW? Okay, so, you know, potentially, how does this bill impact, you know, we heard that there's a current complaint, how, how does that all factor into all of this?
Is it a lawsuit first or?
It is. We filed a complaint in First Circuit, scheduled a hearing for the 23rd.
So potentially, how many employees could be impacted?
Well, so this bill creates two exceptions, right? The first is for student and employee housing, right? So the impact would be that, and UH may disagree, but it would exempt those existing employees as well. So we're talking about janitors twos and threes that currently work in student housing and employee housing. Second one is it creates a separate exception for any privatized leased or owned, right? So those two aren't necessarily combined, it's, they're separate and exclusive of each other. So it's not just student and employee housing at Union First White, it could be any project moving forward in the state. So in terms of impact now, not counting vacancies, we're looking at 25 or so current employees within student housing at both Manoa and Hilo.
Thank you very much. Members, any other questions?
I have a last question for Kelvin. Kelvin, when you first did the lease with the foundation for Atherton, who was maintaining the grounds?
So can you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, when you folks first was working on getting the lease with the foundation and you folks took over the maintenance, took the students all out of the building because of asbestos and all this, who was maintaining the grounds? Because we were paying, you took money out of the Manoa Innovation Center and out of student housing. You guys were paying for the maintenance, right? The building.
So, so there never were students there, so.
I'm not talking about, I'm just saying, who actually maintained the grounds for Atherton?
So when, so, so UH Foundation acquires the property from the Y, and then eventually, UH Manoa got a lease from UH Foundation. And then UH Manoa was, I'm going to air quote, maintaining the property in a shuttered condition.
With, with civil service workers?
I would believe so. It's however, it's however, Manoa maintains, I'm going to air quote maintain because nobody cut grass or anything like that.
Or whatever workers, right, to maintain it back in the beginning?
Probably, yeah.
I'm actually not sure. We should double check because I don't think, I'm not.
So the foundation hired people?
Possibly.
No, but what was all that money going to then that we were paying?
Yeah, probably to, through the, the foundation would be, you know, let's say there was a leaking pipe or something like that.
Well, that's not surmise. Can you get that information?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, members. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to Senate Bill 3317. Relating to collective bargaining, this establishes a new collective bargaining unit for graduate assistants employed by UH and the community college system. Okay, up first, we have the Chair of the Hawaii Labor Relations Board.
Good morning, Chair.
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
Marcus, it's not morning, it's afternoon.
Oh. I will, I will stand on my, I will stand on my, I will stand on my written testimony and be present for any question you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Deborah Halbert from UH.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Deborah Halbert, Vice President for Academic Strategy. We also stand on our written testimony, but I'm happy to answer questions. We also have others here from UH that can answer questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Director of Budget and Finance?
Ms. Halbert, are you in support or not in support?
We are either, we are not supporting or not supporting, if that made sense. We're just providing comments.
No position.
No position. Thank you, that's the word I wanted.
Okay, thank you very much. Budget and Finance? Okay, with comments, we have UPA. Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Haley Burford. Okay, from UH and so forth. Tom Israel, NEA.
Good afternoon. My name's Danielle Duraco. I am here for National Education Association, speaking on behalf of Tom Israel and our 3,000 members nationwide of the National Education Association. I'm here to share that NEA and our members stand in full support of SB 3317, advocating for the establishment of a new, unique bargaining unit for Hawaii's graduate workers. I've had the honor of working closely with Academic Labor United and have witnessed their unwavering dedication to secure their collective bargaining rights. Graduate workers across the nation have long fought for these rights, and Hawaii is absolutely no exception. With over 100,000 unionized graduate workers nationwide in over 80 institutions and growing, it is clear that this is a common and necessary practice. With the recent legal affirmations from the Hawaii Supreme Court and the HLRB, it is imperative that this esteemed joint committee now do its part and approve this deeply researched and widely supported bill. SB 3317 is not just a bill. It is a pivotal step towards ensuring fairness and justice for these essential, essential workers of the academic community of Hawaii. Indeed, I cannot honestly imagine the Alu grads will stop until they finally have the union that they deserve. I am present for questions the committee may have, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have the Hawaii State Teachers Association.
Aloha, Chairs and members of the committee. I see that Ossin's in DC, but he's not on the Zoom, so I'm it. We strongly support, supporting having the students, the ALU, have their own union. We have been working very closely with them because the Hawaii State Teachers Association is an affiliate of the NEA, and we've been providing them support and helping them to this process. We believe that they should have the right to form their own union because they're looking at ways to improve their working conditions, like the teachers did back early in the 70s. We went on strike, not because of salary, but because of the working conditions we were under. So please consider this and support this bill for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have the United Public Workers. Okay, in support, Democratic Party of Hawaii, Chris Caulfield, support. We have HGA. Here with comments. Okay, we have Local Five. Okay, in support, Americans for Democratic Action Hawaii. Also in support LW, Local 142. Okay, in support, Democratic Party of Hawaii Labor Caucus. Okay, in support, we have Elizabeth Yenzu. Okay, thank you very much. Again, Chris Caulfield. Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus in support. Alexander Prozey, Prozey?
Aloha, thank you Chair Akina, thank you Chair Barkato Kim, thank you Chair Wadewaki, and thank you Chair Kadani. My name is Alex Prozey, a second-year PhD student in the American Studies Department, and today I am representing Academic Labor United, and we stand in strong support of SB 3317 to amend HRS 896 to create Bargain Unit 16 for graduate assistants. Graduate assistants are essential to all facets of university operations, and yet our rights as workers have been continually denied. Graduate assistants in Hawaii have been fighting for the rights to organize since the 1970s. A version of this bill has been introduced to the legislature since 2015, where it arrived at the governor's desk but was vetoed. In 2017, graduate workers founded ALU with the intent to gain legal recognition. In recent months, our position has become significantly stronger. Supreme Court compelled the HLRB to make declaratory judgment on the status of graduate workers. The HLRB determined on January 4th, 2024, that GAs are public employees with the right to collectively bargain. The HLRB also ruled that we didn't fit into any existing bargaining units except for Unit 7, 8, or 13, but these three CBUs do not fit us. We are grateful to HGA and UPA for showing their support for this bill as it stands. It is clear that graduate students need our own bargaining unit. We are ready to be in our own union. ALU operates under long ratified bylaws and has a structure similar to most labor unions. In the last few years alone, Alu has raised funds to support workers through COVID, fought for the rights of international students, and mobilized hundreds of GAs to demand improved wages and sick leave policies. Without support or recognition from the university, we have already boasted more than 700 active members of Alu. This is 50% of all GAs, and we continually recruit more. Organization brims with the enthusiasm of new members eager to step into former roles and take on our union's traditions of community and care. I am one of these newer members and now humbly serve as the Communications Chair for our union. I ask these committees to do the right thing. It has been more than 50 years, and we cannot wait for another. The time is now. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so some of these names I will butcher, please excuse me.
Can you just say how many, if anybody wants to testify, save time because we have time?
So Iya Marinon? On Zoom? Hi, we can't hear you. Can you please unmute yourself?
I can hear you.
Okay, just, please note that we did get your testimony and support. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. Udoni Rana Singh. Did I say that right? On Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Hannah Rosendo, on Zoom?
She is present.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Hannah Rosendo. I'm a master's candidate in tropical conservation biology at UH Hilo and a graduate teaching assistant there also. Thank you to the Chairs for this opportunity to share. In the spring of 2022, a minimum wage step increase was promised to GAs in the UH system at both campuses, but ultimately, UH Hilo was forced to sacrifice a GA position to match the salary increase. Again, last year, UH Manoa received raises, and when I approached the administration inquiring about our raises for GAs at UH Hilo, I was told they would need to sacrifice another position to compensate if our salaries were to increase to match. Clearly, this isn't a sustainable pattern, and it's a constant reminder that my position is not as highly valued by UH despite the many students that depend on me to guide their education. Having a graduate student worker union would provide a legal framework for accountability such that the university would have to ensure equitable outcomes for all workers, regardless of campus, whenever it implements any policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Diana, Diana?
Hi, good afternoon to the Chairs and Vice Chairs of this committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would just like to reiterate that we have the full support of the National Education Association and the Hawaii State Teachers Association in building our union. They have been particularly helpful in helping us improve our operations from a financial perspective. They have been particularly helpful in helping us improve our operations from a financial perspective, and they are fully funding five ALU members to attend the Higher Education Conference this March, where we can learn more from workshops hosted by graduate student union representatives. And HSCA has been extremely supportive in helping us navigate the unique landscape of union labor and politics in Hawaii. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Ari Wawangwazu.
Aloha, Michael Cole. My name is Ari Wawangwazu. I'm an international PhD student at UH. I've worked as a GA for the past three years, for which I've been nominated for the Francis David Award for undergraduate teaching. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the ALU Gender Justice Committee to testify in strong support of SB three-three-one-seven. I am pardoned by Chair Donna Mercado Kim's approvable HB five-five-four last year, when it was heard by the Senate Higher Education Committee. ALU members advocated for this bill, including State Director, Every Voice Coalition Hawaii Anna Nalani Eze. As ALU builds survivor-centered protocols of safety as a union, we see SB three-three-one-seven not only as an advance for education, higher education access, but also an opportunity for all of us here to continue working together for the safety of all workers and students from sexual violence. Speaking as a survivor of sexual violence myself and as a transformative justice practitioner, I affirm that ALU requires and is ready for our own collective bargaining unit so that we could implement intersectional protocols that are capable of addressing the full spectrum of the members' unique needs. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Sarah Maria Sastamoinen. Sorry.
No, thank you, President.
Oh, oh, thank you.
Aloha and terve. Passibo, mahalo, Chairs, Vice Chairs, especially my Senator who is here today, and members of the committee. My name is Sarah Maria Sastamoinen, and my pronouns are she and they. I'm a third-year PhD student at the University of Hawaii, and each of these years I've testified in front of committees of the Senate and the House about graduate student unization, and I'm here again today. I want to reiterate not only my written testimony in support of the bill, but to add additional comments. We have a really unique position as both workers and students. That makes sense only to have us have our own bargaining unit. I'm gonna share some personal stories for me. We have a lot of supportive faculty, but that isn't the case necessarily with all of our managers. I'm just gonna shout out to Deb Halbert. She's a faculty member in my department, but without ever having met her, she helped me with an application to teach in an innovative classroom. But again, that's not always the case. My first GA ship was a research GA ship, and after I ended that position to take a teaching TA ship in my department, the faculty members who had been my managers tried to get me to write academic publications on their behalf, and I really didn't have any form of recourse besides my own advisor in a different department, when again, this research isn't related to my own study or my own research, to try to go up through the deans and try to manage it. But there's no sort of recourse that we have, but we could if we had our own bargaining unit. There's also a lot of issues that even when grad students try to organize around, we can't do it right now. The university does something called academic probation. For most PhD programs, we can do it within ten years. But if we've hit seven years, even if, let's say, like we give birth to a child, but to take care of a parent who has cancer, if we hit seven years, they put academic probation on our transcripts, which means we can't get fellowships, we can't get jobs, because this is something that the university has chosen to do, even when the graduate student representatives, myself and another person on Grad Council, got faculty on Graduate Council to unanimously try to overturn this, but graduate programs chose to keep it. So for these reasons, we need to be able to have a union that could represent our interests as both workers and students. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. And members and members of the audience, we did receive over about two hundred pieces of testimony, all in support. So, you know, any others wishing to testify who are here present or on Zoom?
Aloha. My name is Olivia Meyer, and I'm a UH graduate worker in support of SB three-three-one-seven. Before coming to Hawaii for my PhD, I did my master's in Kentucky, where my friends make just under twenty thousand dollars, roughly equivalent to our UH stipends. They live in one of the most affordable states, while Hawaii ranks among the least affordable. Hawaii is falling behind in higher education, and it's a direct result of the denial of graduate workers' collective bargaining. I understand concerns about GA willingness to pay dues due to the twenty-eighteen Janus ruling. However, we already pay UH almost a thousand dollars per year, equivalent to five percent of our twenty thousand dollar paychecks. These come as student fees for services that many of us have no time to use or we are ineligible. We would rather pay dues to those who represent us. As a former union organizer in Kentucky, I know GAs will pay dues even when they're not legally obligated to do so. ALU already redistributes funds through COVID hardship funds, paying out of pocket for food at union events, and sharing tips on accessing healthcare and food stamps. Dues are not a problem. GAs already support one another when UH does not. We deserve a union. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any others wishing to testify, please? And for those who are testifying verbally, if you could provide us something in writing so we can include it in the record, please. Okay, thank you.
Chairs, members of the committee, I appreciate the opportunity to give my testimony today. My name is Miles Strzaskowski. I'm an organizer with Academic Labor United, and I would like to voice my strong support of SB thirty-three-seventeen. So in fall twenty-twenty-three, we estimate that about eighty percent of undergrads have directly been taught by TAs during a given semester. That's only considering one individual class. Most cases, undergrads take multiple classes taught by TAs. The compensation and the working conditions offered to TAs has led to hiring shortages, like those in the Physics Department and the School of Life Sciences, and sections of required classes are being canceled, and student progress has been delayed. Being able to collectively bargain in our own unit will allow graduate workers to improve our living and working conditions. Inevitably, this will result in hiring from a more diverse and typically underrepresented background, bringing not only monetary value, but also intellectual and cultural contributions to the university and Hawaii as a whole. The students that I personally teach are the future of Hawaii. They will wind up as engineers in your government, your Department of Transportation, your Board of Water Supply. Thank you for the opportunity to present my testimony to you today.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else would like to testify?
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs. My name is Serge Alquabilliam, Executive Director of the Hawaii Worker Center. I know it's been a long afternoon, so I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to commend ALU for their organizing and what they've done these past few years. They've gone to the Supreme Court. They've gone to the Labor Relations Board, and they're asking for your help at this point to help get them past the finish line. And I believe they're almost there, and I'm just really, I just want to commend them for all their efforts. I also want to speak as an alumnus of the University of Hawaii system. You know, I believe that as our flagship university, we do need to hold our university to a higher standard when it comes to labor practices. Again, thank you again for the opportunity to speak in support of this bill.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to testify? Yep?
Aloha, Senators. I'm Emmy Jenkins, and I'm currently an undergraduate student at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. Something I've noticed as an undergraduate is how fewer and fewer students are considering grad school. I have classmates who love their studies and would love to continue their research, but they can't because they can't afford to live on unlivable wages for two and more than often many more years and are forced to take any job they can get once they finish their bachelor's degree. This means fewer and fewer people with working-class backgrounds that are represented at the highest levels of academia, and those institutions play a leading role in the direction science and technology and many other fields are going in. You can't do research to help the working class if you're not actively including working-class people in that discussion. The second point I want to make is that, as a research university, most professors are incentivized to focus primarily on their research, so it falls on the teaching assistants to create and grade assignments and provide badly needed support to the students struggling through the class. Not only that, but many of my classes are directly taught by graduate students, and if students are forced to work nights alongside the long hours their classes and research demand, the quality for the class, for me, significantly goes down. A few years ago, I took a lab class that involved a lot of new lab techniques and therefore required a lot of hands-on instruction by the graduate assistant running the lab. And while our TA did an incredible job, I was concerned about how tired he always looked. And when I chatted with him for a little bit, he said that he was working at a restaurant at night to make ends meet. My girlfriend is also a graduate assistant, and her research and teaching schedule are so demanding that she can't even work a second job. And so when she gets her paycheck, over half of it has to go to rent. If graduate students are not even allowed to advocate for themselves effectively, there is no possible way for them to change their situation. In conclusion, the graduate students here are asking for a voice, not just to advocate for themselves, but for the quality of higher education as a whole, and the union is the single best way to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any others wishing to testify? Oh, oh, sorry, we have someone on Zoom? Oh, oh, you're back.
Yes, I'm back with a working mic. Okay, thank you. Aloha. I'm Iya Maranyan, and I'm a second-year PhD student in the Sociology Department at UH and the co-Vice Chair of Academic Labor United. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a testimony and my strong support for SB thirty-three-seventeen in its current form. And I am an international student from the Philippines, and before coming here to pursue my graduate studies, I was a labor organizer based in Manila. And as an international student, we experienced up to five months' delay in getting our first salaries. Move cost, SEVIS fees, visa application fees, not to mention food and lodging expenses before even the semester starts, all have to be owed by the student, which amounted to a whopping two thousand dollars in my experience. This harrowing experience is only one example of among many stories of international students in UH who account for seventeen percent of the graduate student population. In comparison, our unionized peers in other universities receive not only visa and SEVIS allowances to offset expenses, but because international students rely solely on their GA salary for living expenses or risk deportation, many unions set us as the baseline for contract negotiations to ensure that all GAs receive a livable wage. The graduate students at the UH system are ready. We need our own collective bargaining unit for the rights of those most marginalized in our community, and we need it now. Ramik Salamat.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, questions?
Yes, University of Hawaii. Before you come up, let me just ask Marcus. So, Marcus, one of the testimonies said that you folks ruled that they were not part of Seven, Eight, and Thirteen, or?
No, no, let me, let me, if you don't mind.
If you can briefly, quickly, yeah.
I brought the order here because I've heard certain misrepresentations on what the board ruled. So let me read the order itself. It says, "The Board declares that petitioners' graduate assistant members are not included in any of the following units identified in HRS eighty-nine-six." So that's one, two, four, five, six, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen. So what that leaves is for Seven, Eight, and Thirteen. But the reason why, that was never the question posed to the board by the petitioners. And we have to, and we can only make rulings upon what the parties submit to the board.
So the board never once said that they're not, shouldn't be part of it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that would be incorrect.
Okay, so just to clarify, so Seven and Eight are university employees, Seven faculty, Eight the APT.
APT.
So you're saying that that was not excluded?
HGA.
That was not ruled upon as being inappropriate as a bargaining unit for the graduate assistants.
So it could be appropriate?
That was not determined by the board.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I'll be there.
Okay, UH? Okay, I have a lot of questions. So who handles graduate assistants, their concerns, their issues, their workload at this point at the University of Hawaii?
Can I call the University of Hawaii Manoa? Ninety-nine percent of the graduate students are at Manoa. There's only a few that are not.
Because, you know, we're hearing all of these concerns, and it's been brought up year after year, and I'm just surprised that the university has not addressed these issues. If you did, maybe we wouldn't be in this situation. But that being said, who handles this? Who determines if a professor can tell them whatever it is they want to do, even though it's not within supposedly, I don't know if they have a job description or how that actually works, but, and their wages and so forth. Who makes those determinations?
Okay, there's a bunch of questions in there.
Right.
In terms of the job description, there is a position description for all GA positions, in terms of their duties and responsibilities for that particular position. In terms of their wages and salary, that is determined by the university.
And based on what?
Well, we have a salary schedule, but the step on that salary schedule is determined by their supervisor, their faculty or staff supervisor.
But based on what?
The minimum required step in the compensation schedule is determined by cost of attendance, which is a living transportation miscellaneous and does not include tuition because GA tuition is waived.
Okay, in the sense where it's waived, how much are we talking about?
It depends on how many credits they take. GAs are required to take a minimum of six credits, unless they need to be full-time, which is eight credits, depending on their financial support, loans and other things, or scholarships and fellowships that may require them to be full-time, which is eight credits for a graduate student.
And what does that amount to for six credits or eight credits when you're talking about tuition?
If they are a resident student, it's six hundred and fifty dollars per credit. If it's a non-resident student, it's about, I think it's fourteen hundred dollars per credit.
So for six credits?
It's about thirty-nine hundred per semester or seventy-eight hundred per year for six credits.
Yeah, it depends on the number of credits that they are taking.
And for eight credits, it would be?
About forty-eight or five thousand or so for a resident student. And then over ten or twelve for a non-resident student.
So is this considered income?
Their tuition exemption, their tuition is, I believe it's not taxed.
Okay, so it's like income, but it's not taxed, so it's like pure, so that should be factored into what they also get paid. Because the salary steps does not include the tuition.
No, it does not.
So if they had to pay tuition, then that would have been
Potentially, yes.
Potentially what their whole income. If you actually paid them the tuition money and they had to pay it back, then it would be income, and they'd have to pay taxes on it, which they don't at this point.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, it would be similar to any other employee, yes.
And as far as their work conditions, who manages them?
That would be their supervisor.
Right, but I mean
If they have issues and concerns, though, we do have a process at the university that we do share at every orientation. We share with every graduate program to share that they they can go to their graduate chair, department chair, the dean of their school or college. And if they are uncomfortable with any of those people, then they can come to the graduate division and come to see. Right now, it'd be me.
And have they come to you?
Some have, yes.
And what have, what's happened?
The majority of them, nine out of ten, do not want me to do anything because they are afraid of retaliation. And so I advise on options that they could consider, and some have. Others say they will take it into consideration, and they make their own decision after that. And some, very few though, some have filed formal complaints.
So the testimony said eighty percent, eighty percent of is taught by TAs, eighty percent of some of the classes, courses are taught by TAs?
I don't know if it's eighty percent.
If I may clarify, as that was my comment, that number comes from the quantity of TAs and then the average of twenty students per TA. And if you do the math, that's approximately eighty percent of the undergraduate student population. I would not make the claim that eighty percent of classes are taught by TAs. However, at least eighty percent of students,
Get taught by a TA.
Are taught by TAs, which is arguably the more important metric.
So the need for TAs, what is the need for TAs or for graduate assistants? I'm asking you basic questions. It's not that I don't know the answer, but I want to hear it from you folks.
So the need for a graduate assistant in general? Because we have, because we have three different types of GAs. We have the teaching ones, we have research ones, and we have more general project coordination, different types of work kinds of GAs. GAs in general, I mean, it's part of a graduate education. So it's part of also their training and learning as they become potential faculty. Historically, that was the case, to become future faculty. Now, that has expanded into more than just faculty, government, industry, different markets, depending on their field. The graduate teaching assistantship, that's typically to provide teaching The graduate teaching assistantship, that's typically to provide teaching experience for a graduate student, where they are, they are to be mentored by their supervisor and helped to develop their teaching skills. There are, um, there's an orientation for them that they participate in. Uh, in some units, there is a, there's an actual class that they participate in where they actually have discussions, it's like a seminar. And where they learn about effective teaching.
So it's, it's beyond just being an employee, they, they, these are not just regular employees in the sense they are being counseled and coached supposedly and given, sorry, we're not taking any questions or comments from the audience at this point.
Yes, I mean, historically speaking, that has been the, um, I guess, the, the, the role of, and the, I guess, experience of a graduate student who has a graduate assistantship.
Okay, so here's the other question. So I, I'm sure they augment professors' work, correct?
They do, yes.
The teaching situation. I've heard from graduate assistants who've said that they've been thrown into classes, they've been teaching stuff they don't really like that knowledgeable, but they're thrown in and done on this, which is concerning for me because students pay their tuition to be taught by these very high-paid professors. And according to the numbers that was given to me, that while the regions have a policy that says professors are faculty is supposed to teach twenty-four credit hours at Manoa, that the average they teach is eight to twelve credit hours, which means somebody is teaching the rest of their requirements. And they get equivalencies based on research, service to the community, all, all of that. Which, if you go back to what the, what the region's policy is, is that teaching is the most important. Teaching is the priority, not community service. And unless it's a research program, it's teaching without that. And so when a professor doesn't teach twenty-four credit hours, you get all kinds of equivalencies, then, and on top of that, many of them have graduate assistants teaching the eight to twelve credit hours or lecturers to teach the eight to twelve credit hours. And that, that's all numbers that's been given to, to me over the years that I've collected from the University of Hawaii themselves. So the concern is that who monitors that? Who monitors the workload of the graduate assistants? And of course, when you talk about the faculty, then there's a whole, every time there's one professor that doesn't teach a full complement, you either got to get a second professor or you got to use your graduate assistants.
Just to, just to clarify the workload piece, the twenty-four credit hours is an equivalency metric for the scope of faculty work across teaching. And you're right, teaching is a very important component of that. And at different campuses, it plays a higher role than in other campuses with our flagship, uh, research institution being the one where the, it is offset by scholarship and service. But we use the twenty-four credit hour metric as a way of fully understanding the scope of a faculty workload, which does include other things besides the teaching. And so as you noted, there are reductions from a three-credit hour course if you are engaged in scholarship, et cetera. Additionally, many of these graduate assistants are also engaged in scholarship.
Right.
Um, and so it isn't the case that they're only and exclusively teaching, there are many that are also teaching.
And I can understand three-credit hours, so the question was how many teach twenty-one?
Graduate students.
No, professors.
Oh.
So I'm just saying, the, the average is eight to twelve, which if teaching is most important, then teaching should be the majority. It should be, it should be at least eighteen, fifteen to eighteen and not eight to twelve. But I'm just saying that in relationship to the graduate assistants, because then the workload falls on them. And if they can't complain and they have nobody there that is fighting for, for them as far as what their workload is, then what's to say that a professor is not, you know, throwing a lot of, I shouldn't say we're throwing, but assigning a lot of the responsibilities that they should be taking care to the graduate assistants, which is then for the student that's paying the tuition is also not getting what they, they paying for.
So as you know, we have different classifications of faculty, right? Instructional, we would expect more teaching from instructional faculty than research faculty, for example. So it's, it's also depend not, uh, upon faculty classification. Uh, due to the work of, um, Vice President Halbert and her whole division, right? We now have a kind of workload, um, assignment template and faculty have to, the, the chair has to report each semester or yearly on the workload of the faculty in the previous sema- in the previous year, right? So we are monitoring faculty workload very carefully, and we've developed at Manoa a workload equivalency, what will and will not count towards, um, those twenty, twenty-four credits, yeah.
So is that new, that's new?
The, um
Workload?
The workload equivalency framework is new.
Right, which we've asked for, so when do we get to, when do we get to see that?
I, I believe that you
Well, we, we've described the class, reclassification, the workload equivalencies are in consultation with the faculty at this point. And their, and their, each campus is working on their own workload equivalency, though the community colleges already have theirs in policy.
So why?
Could I just say one more thing? Um, so, um, G As who are teaching, or what we call G T As, they would, there's a variety of ways that they might be used. They might be in charge of a lab section, they might be a T A in a large enrollment class, so they're taking some portion of, um, that class and they're doing the grading for it. Or they may be teaching their own standalone class. So there's a variety of ways in which they're, they're used and in which they, in a hopefully scaffolded way, get more and more experience with teaching. That kind of, um, workload would be overseen in some ways by, like typically, the graduate chair of the department that they're employed. And that would be the first place that graduate students might turn should they have complaints about being used um, in unfair ways by a faculty member. But I, I just want to make sure that we're all clear, they're used in different ways in different kinds of classes. There's no one model for the G T A.
Can U H function without grad assistants?
I would say no, absolutely not. Where most research, one, universities could not function without graduate assistants.
Okay, members, any other questions? Senator Yar.
I'm trying to get a sense of whether there's, I guess this asks for a systemic resolution to recurring problems, I would imagine. And you had mentioned that the complaints are harder to get because people are concerned about retaliation. So I guess my question is, to what extent do you have a sense of the, of the global, to what, what extent is this, is, are the problems systemic versus at one, you know, per? Because in order to make that assessment, you need to have good data. And if you don't have good data, then you're not able to, so, so my, so, um, so I guess one question is, is there a way to, um, get information without having to get, uh, reported? So that you have a grip of what the situation is, number one, number two. Uh, and if you do, do you, do you have enough information to, to make a, an opinion about whether it's systemic? Uh, that it takes a systemic, um, solution? Uh, and so that's the second question. And, and, and then two other related questions, I'll just lay the other two down. One is, if there was a union, would it be safer for that, for the graduate assistants to, the teacher assistant to report? And would a union, uh, having the union be able to, um, have, have better results? So those are four questions, it's
Okay, we do have a hard stop at five, and the committee does have two more, um
Well, I guess lay it down and they can
But can we get that information, because it's got to move forward, so we can get that. You have a general answer, you can share it, but detailed, you can get that to us.
We are implementing, or well, we've started to implement climate surveys, um, relative to graduate assist, graduate students experiences, which is inclusive of graduate assistants. And that would help us to, to, to see whether or not, and how much of a systemic problem this could be or might be. Because at the moment, I can't say that it's all in one area or all in another. The students come from a variety of different places, so it's not all in one program per se or one college. So it's hard to say if it's truly systemic, um, but the, we're hoping that the survey will help to, to give us more information.
Could I just add that, um, based on the kinds of testimonies we heard last year, um, the graduate, the, the dean of the graduate division, myself, Vice President Goveya, and her, um, Office of Human Resources have been working on, um, uh, revising the G A complaint process to make it more friendly. We have worked both with, um, the G S O representatives and with representatives from A L U in trying to formulate a more effective G A complaint procedure, so that's now under consultation.
And we, we should note that whatever we say aside, it's clear that the graduate students believe that they, that a union would help them on these matters.
Okay, quickly, members.
Real question, quick question. So we're talking about here forming a new bargaining unit. So, so I, I think the question, and I don't know if it goes back to H L R B, but what does it take? So you, you have representatives of seven and eight. Um, what does it take for bargaining so that, so you're saying you're trying to resolve the graduate student problems with, with their working conditions, with their salaries? On the other hand, when you form a bargaining unit, there are also other requirements, and what, what does it take? And I, it might be a long answer, but I think it's important to know because we're forming a bargaining
Yeah, can we get that information?
Send that in.
Sure.
Last question.
Yeah, so just, um, answering Senator Yar's thing. Yes, a union will protect them. Yes, it would be more efficient to them to have a union, because that's how all the labor unions and all the other unions started, because they was being mistreated on the job and whatnot. So those are the things that's going to benefit them, having their own bargaining unit and be able to have their own people to defend them, that relates to their job and their description. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Uh, we're, we're just going to go ahead and, um, uh, proceed with the decision-making on this particular agenda.
Yes. Okay. You have, oh, I have, I have to do. Oh, I lost it. I'm looking for my, sorry, I got too many papers here. There we go. Okay, so we're on thirty-one ninety, this is University of Hawaii reporting requirements to identify the costs of workers' compensation coverage. Recommendation is to do an S D one for technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency. Uh, and I don't believe we need any A G, any amendment on that. So any, any recommendations or discussion, members? Hearing that, the Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Senate Bill three-one-nine-zero, pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Measures adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Labor and Technology Committee, same recommendations. Any questions or concerns, seeing none, Vice Chair?
Chair, aye, Vice Chair, aye, Senator Yar?
Aye.
Senator Lee, Senator Favella?
Aye.
Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Senate Bill twenty-five oh-seven relating to civil service. Members, the recommendation is to defer. Okay, moving on to Senate Bill thirty-three seventeen relating to collective bargaining. Due to some of the, um, questions as some of the, uh, my colleagues have asked, and they were waiting for specific information specifically to U H, the timeline and other information, I believe that was, uh, posed, uh, by certain, uh, colleagues here. Uh, we're going to defer decision-making to Tuesday the thirteenth, uh, at three P M in this conference room.
Chair, can I clarify some of the questions?
Yes, please.
So can we get, uh, what it was cost to stand up a, a new union? So that can be provided to us? And whether or not you, any of the unions that was mentioned by the board that they didn't rule on, that have you folks checked with them and whether or not they are willing to take you on? Because the cost of, um, a union, starting up a union is, uh, very expensive. Um, so that, those are the things that I think we need to have by Tuesday when we make decision-making.
Also from U H, uh, what it, what you do in, in terms of having bargaining units, what's required? In terms of bargaining units, what is required when you have a bargaining unit and how you deal with that?
Okay, was there any other question that we missed that we should get by Tuesday?
And also to the N E A and to the H S T A, who has shown probably the most support and administrative support at this point in time. We'd like to, uh, you know, see how you folks are being involved and how we can get to the finish line for this particular group. Okay, and if that information and all information to the questions posed can be provided to the chairs of the joint committees.
Because I noticed the unions have all come in support, but they're not willing to take, take them on in their union, so that is of concern.
Could I just add, um, from H L R B, you, you excluded from the list seven and eight, which, which is at the university and
They didn't exclude it.
You, he did, he says those are not
He said they weren't asked on, they weren't, they weren't asked to.
You are saying that seven and eight, which are unions of the bargaining within the university, you said that they could be possible bargaining units.
He said they weren't asked to.
They weren't asked to, uh, rule on those two bargaining units, seven, eight, um
And thirteen.
Thirteen and three.
But you did say, you did list the other unions.
Yeah, and those are the unions that was to the petitioner, and he was Mister, Mister Collins, who represented the graduate assistants, requested for the board.
I see.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Chair, anything else?
Nope, that's it, so we are adjourned.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Okay, and if you can leave quietly, we're going to count us down for the Okay, want to call back to order the Committee on Higher Education. Uh, we are on our three-thirty P M agenda. Senate Bill three-one-eight-nine relating to University of Hawaii Conference Center Revolving Fund, establishes the University of Hawaii Conference Center Revolving Fund and accounts under the fund to facilitate the administration of, of revolving fund for conference center programs among various campuses. Uh, first person testifying on this measure is Michael Ng.
Good afternoon, Chair, university stands on its testimony's support.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to justify in this measure? Members, any questions of Mister Ng?
H S D submitted.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get that, but go ahead, Laverne.
Submitted it, and, and we support it because we are one of the unions that is on this advisory council. And Hawaii has a long history of union formation, and H S D was the first public applying union that went on strike. And that history needs to continue, and we support this.
Okay, well, you're talking about twenty-one eighty-seven.
Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong bill.
Yeah, we're on the conference, we're on the, okay, that's okay, we, we, you, you, yeah, we'll count that when it comes to it. So this is on the council under to facilitate administration revolving funds. Okay, there are no questions now, Laverne, thank you for that testimony. That is relating to the Labor Education Advisory Council, specifies that the Labor Education Advisory Council shall be advisory to the president of the University of Hawaii and the activities and programs of the Center for Labor and Education Research. Requires written responses to address the council's advice and adoptions or resolutions by the president and the chancellor of the University of Hawaii West Oahu campus. We have Jade Bhutai testifying in support. Uh, Alan Rosenfeld. Rosenfeld. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and Senator Hashimoto. Uh, my name's Alan Rosenfeld, Associate Vice President for Academic Programs and Policy at the University of Hawaii. Uh, we stand in support of this measure, we stand in our, our testimony in support of this measure, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, I'll be here.
Thank you. Candace Park, same recommendation of statewide concern?
Uh, yes.
That's the only one? Thank you. And we have Ussatui. And we have Osatui. That was Osatui. Okay, that was Osatui. Anybody else wishing to testify on Senate Bill twenty-one eighty-seven? I do have a question, so maybe UH can answer this, Alan. So what, what, do we need a law for this? The president is not going to take the advice, and neither is West Oahu campus?
I'd leave that to this committee to decide and to the House committee as well. I can't say that UH was invited to join a working group, HR one forty-two, that met in the fall. Representative Peruso was a member of that committee. And the recommendation that was contained in the report that the commit, that that work group submitted to the legislature was included in this bill.
Right, but can the president on their own advise, be advisory? Or, you know, accept written responses addressing the council's advice and adoption without
Right.
A bill?
So the labor unions were an integral part of that work group. And it's clear that the position is, and UH agrees, that are both clear, the Center for Labor Education Research and LIAC were, were created to have a statewide reach and impact. And for that reason, it makes sense that LIAC serves as an advisory to the president in addition to the chancellor of West Oahu because it's not just, those aren't just regional organizations, but they're really trying to serve the labor communities across the country.
Right, but that's not the question, the question is, can't UH do, why, why isn't UH responsive enough to be able to just do this? Why do we need a law? Well, I can see why we need a law, because we don't get the kind of response that oftentimes.
Well, I apologize if that's the case. And, you know, the labor community, I, I think the impetus came for, the bill came from the labor community, and we certainly support this recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Senator Kidani?
Why is only the UH West Oahu chancellor?
Oh, I can answer that. So the Center for Labor Education Research is physically located at the University of Hawaii West Oahu, and its director reports to the chancellor. Once upon a time, it started in nineteen seventy-six, and in the eighties it was housed at Manoa, and in the nineteen nineties it moved to West Oahu. So in terms of the reporting structure, it, it reports to the chancellor, and it's only been under the chancellor of West Oahu's purview up to this point. And so LIAC serves as the, the node of interaction between the labor unions and CLIR. And to this point, it's only officially, in official capacity, only serves as advisory to the chancellor at West Oahu. But again, because it has the statewide reach, the idea is to have them advise the president as well.
I, I'm not understanding, because are you saying that the UH West Oahu chancellor is the only one that needs advice?
That
I mean, we have Zoom, so everybody could be included in the meeting, they don't have to travel there, so I'm, I'm just curious.
They want the council, they want, the council wants them, the president and, and West Oahu chancellor to adopt, to address the concerns of the council.
Correct, they could have a direct channel to the president instead of going to the chancellor who then goes to the president.
Yeah, so I guess I'm saying, is she the only one, chancellor of UH West Oahu, that doesn't do this?
Well, she's the, that position is the only one in question because the CLIR is housed at UH West Oahu and reports to the chancellor. So that's their supervisor.
Still not getting it, thank you.
Okay, sorry if I didn't explain it well.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, okay, we're going to go into decision-making, and with the given time, I'm just going to go right in. Members, if you have any issues or concerns, you can bring it up. So for Senate Bill thirty-one eighty-nine, this is on the revolving, Hawaii Conference Center Revolving Fund. And the recommendation is we do an SD one with technical and non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency. And statewide concern, we had, was that on that one? No, on the second one, okay. Any, any discussion, members? We are on thirty-one eighty-nine with SD one for technical and non-substantive amendments. Okay? No discussion, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga? Excused. Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Measures adopted, Madam Chair.
Okay, and for Senate Bill twenty-one eighty-seven relating to the Labor Education Advisory Council, recommendation is to SD one to incorporate matter of statewide concern. There are no other amendments. Members, any discussion? Hearing none, Chair votes aye, Madam Vice Chair.
Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
So twenty-one eighty-seven.
Yes.
Easy.
She nodded her head.
That'd be record saying. Go ahead, you have to say it loud.
Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
And she's adopted.
Thank you, and with three minutes left, we are adjourned.